All right, good evening, everyone. It is seven oh five. Let's start our meeting. Let's rise, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Right, we have a pretty light schedule tonight, um, and I want to reserve some discussion for uh, for uh, the informal discussion later on. And we had a couple of things that have come up over the last week or so, um, but we'll get to that soon. All right, um, let's first get a motion to accept the agenda. There's no changes I have.
No movement.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it passes. Um, did everyone read the minutes from August twentieth?
Yes.
All right, it looks good to me as well.
Except then.
All right, to exit, you second any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. On a roll. All right, communications, correspondence, and we will have an update from Jason soon. I don't know if Jason is on the line. Okay, great. Um, in fact, why don't we start with him? We'll get him started and have a couple correspondents. So, Jason, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Um, Mike asked me to uh, come on and just give everyone a update of some of the stuff that we've been doing uh, public works wise, some of the projects coming forward. I will start with some of the lower key stuff. We're um, working on still our new well, uh, getting that testing done. We're waiting for the uh, new pump, the larger pump that we ordered to come in. Hopefully it'll be in in the next two weeks or so, and then from there, uh, probably a few weeks after that, we'll uh, schedule the seven day pump down to see what uh, that uh, test results come out, but we are still moving along with the new well. We uh, our existing well uh, was down for almost a month, but we got the new pump in last week, so that's back online. Um, so we're, we're, that's progressing good. We have uh, Buck Foreman.
Yes, and sorry about that, but while, while it's on, um, for the, the new pump, I know we got the new pump in and the well's back on. Are we looking at having the um, the existing pump that came out, getting that basically rebuilt so that we'll have a decent working spare and another, and if there's another issue? Or are we basically keeping that on the table to look at getting that done at some point in the future?
Yeah, so we took the uh, old pump and we put it down at the uh, sewer treatment plant undercover uh, with the thought that uh, we will have extensive conversations uh, getting it rewound. Um, it's, it's probably around two grand to do so. I would like to and, and leave it on the shelf as a spare. If we ever have a problem with the new pump, we could always switch it out um, and, and make repairs. Uh, just a question of where those funds are coming from. It might be something we have to talk about uh, next budget season, but the, it's out of the weather, it's, it's undercover and um, i- it's all on the table, yes.
Thank you.
Um, another thing that we're uh, working on, so Buck Foreman, we gotta do some masonry repairs on the building up front uh, right around the doorway. Um, that you, if you guys use the front entrance, um, those, those two big sconces in the front, we're gonna redo the masonry around there. Um, and then that came um, under budget uh, for what the numbers that we were predicting, so we're gonna actually do some more masonry on the rest of the building. There's some block work that needs to be fixed uh, towards the rear. And uh, our contractor's gonna evaluate that and then we'll probably have a change order associated with that. We have the community connectivity on Main Street um, that we had the bids come back. Those came back substantially lower than originally thought when um, Brian put it out to bid. So we are currently asking the state to uh, let us expand that project to the uh, Walgreens side, which would be the east side of Main uh, Main Street going from Walgreens as far as we can go with uh, some new sidewalks, some new ADA compliant ramps, and then redoing some of the uh, concrete curbing. We're just waiting back from the state for that. We asked for that uh, blessing last week, but with the holiday, um, just giving them a few more days before I reach back out to them. We have um, LoSa money that um, finance is gonna request that so that we can use to redo the parking entrance to the Brownstone uh, park there over, I can't remember what it, you guys actually call it, but over by the Brownstone Park, the entrance to the uh, parking lot there, and then also on Middlesex Avenue to redo the uh, parking lot for that baseball field as well. So we have that paperwork uh, in the works. We also have lots of money that we're asking to replace some carpeting at the library um, in their uh, area where they have their uh, offices that was never replaced when the other carpet uh, was done. So we're, we got that going. And then the uh, kayak uh, launch and ramp off of Airline Road, uh, those bids came back a little higher than expected. So we're working internally to try to figure out how to um, figure out how to get it within budget. Um, there was proposed two parking lots. We only have one now with the roadway going down. So we're, we're, that's also in the pipeline. Uh, we have a sewer repair on uh, Pickering, that emergency repair that we got some quotes from that came in really high, but um, our highway division along with the sewer division is gonna make those repairs uh, next week. It's a fifteen foot section, a fifteen inch pipe um, that's separated that we're gonna be uh, tackling hopefully next week. We just gotta get a few more parts. Uh, I don't know if you gentlemen have any questions for me?
Just a, just a comment. Uh, this is week three for you, Jason?
Yes, it is. I, I've come back.
Yeah, there you go. Counted days. He's done a real good job uh, getting out to all the departments uh, and checking in. He's inherited a lot of work, uh, a lot of projects that we have, so um, if you have any questions specifically that aren't answered tonight, or reach out to him, reach out to me, we'll catch you the answers, but a lot of moving parts. Uh, they're all working well together. Um, and uh, I think we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna get a lot done in the next couple of months, so um, that's great. Great job, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for the update.
I want to add one thing to what Jason said. We was talking about the um, the river access project. Um, give you an example, we got three hundred thousand dollars for that three years ago. Um, the bid we got from um, from Butler was really good, but we're probably still gonna be fifteen or twenty thousand dollars um, that we'll need to finish that project. It'll be over that. So we're working with them to see we can reduce that cost down. There may come a point where I'll need to come uh, to this board and either see if we can uh, approve some additional funds to complete that or find an alternate, but right now we think we might be able to still get it done. Uh, Jason talked with that. Um, again, Butler's been very good about, about trying to work with us and trying to do as much materials as we can, but uh, but that's the kind of flexibility that we have now when we can work with, you know, with the, with the good vendors we have, so. Anyway, so that is that.
Can I, can I ask a question about that project? Um, it says here that um, so we need to pursue some additional permitting?
Possibly. So what I passed out to everyone is, this is what uh, they're gonna be presenting tomorrow, but I just wanted to add to everyone here, so. Where you going? There you go. No longer can say that. But this is more of your information, yeah.
Okay, so.
This will be put out, yeah. So, all right, um, I have a number of small announcements, but I'm gonna wait till the end. I know Thomas here, we wanna have him get up as soon as possible. Um, before we do the budget, uh, anyone here for public comments? Come on up. Just say your name and your address.
Uh, Jose Otero, Five Gloria Heights here in Portland. Uh, the packet seems pretty substantial. Uh, it's just more information regarding if uh, if you guys recall a few months ago, kind of brought up the uh, blight ordinance. Um, couple of things that are in there is the actual ordinance that is posted online, um, some additional photos that I just wanted to add. Um, my kind of statement that I'm about to give today, I figured I'd write it down, give it to you because you know how statements go. You don't follow, you kind of go off topic. Um, so I just wanted to uh, kind of stand here and ask the town, um, if we've had any progress on the reviewing or coming up with a board. I'm not sure exactly the procedures that work to come up with a board uh, regarding the blight ordinance. Uh, I believe there was an agreement back then that uh, that should be reviewed. Um, but at the, at the same time, I'm also wondering if there's any type of, I call them emergency actions that might be available uh, to be taken. Um, and I, and as I go through this a little bit, kind of it'll click, get a little bit more clear. Um, in your packet, you do have a set of photos. Um, the first four photos, uh, if you remember, I kind of mentioned that we had a, a lot of issues trying to get enforcement out there. Um, those first four photos, after a lot of pressure with the blight officer constantly going after him, he finally went after my neighbor and said, take those down. Um, almost immediately after she took them down, some additional strings went on a flagpole connected to a tree. And I was just like, okay, but what we ended up doing then was we kind of gave it a pause because she got arrested. She trespassed about four times on my property, stole stuff off my property, has subsequently been uh, charged or pled guilty uh, for those uh, charges. Um, so during that whole time, during that proceeding, it was very quiet, beautiful. Nothing else got put up, nothing out front, besides not maintaining her actual yard. That's kind of what we've done. Um, so we were hoping that when everything was done, peace would ensue. Well, as you can see after the first four pictures, you have another set of six photos. Um, and that was a slow progression of what took place within about twenty-four hours of her pleading guilty. Um, so, and it just progressed, and you can see a little bit here, a little bit there, down all the way now to caution tape all the way across the front of her property like, okay, I don't get this. Um, another photo, the next one is her driveway showing an outdoor rug. Well, she's told she can have outdoor rugs outside. I don't think that's how an outdoor rug should look. It's a big ball at the end of her driveway. And then the last two is just some junk and debris. Um, I'm hopefully all those photos are actually in there, so um, went through those over and over. Uh, this is an ongoing cycle. It's remove, reintroduce, escalate, underscores the need for stronger, more consistent enforcement of the blight or blight ordinance, and especially with enforcement. It's not improving, it's getting worse, and it leaves us in limbo. Just to hit a couple of points um, from your website as well as from the ordinance itself, um, on your building department page, it states, you know, including the building official has to deal with state statutes mandating our building code. They are responsible for receiving complaints and issuing initial enforcement action for the recently adopted blight ordinance. Now, this was probably rewritten back when you wrote the original blight ordinance. One thing that I really want to point out, the word is used here, the town of Portland is responsible for looking out and overseeing the town as a whole, and part of that response is protect the financial and personal investments we make in our home and businesses. We're not being protected here in Portland. Um, some of the highlights that I want to hit in your blight ordinance is if it's determined that the building official or the health department, that a building structure or parcel of land poses serious danger or serious or immediate danger, safety, health, and general welfare of a community. Okay, we got that. Garbage, trash, or debris found on the property, we got that. Substantial interference with reasonable use, uh, lawful use and enjoyment. I don't enjoy it. Um, there is a statement also in your um, um, your ordinance that states what debris is. Basically, in short, it's using materials that are being used for what they're not designed to be used for. Everything there as it is. So this raised an important question to me. Why is enforcement um, slated for a single individual? It just does not make sense to me. Interpretations of the ordinance are subjective judgment for that reason, just like a police officers go out somewhere and they're kind of in question on whether something is good, bad, or indifferent, or is this an arrestable offense? They go and they call somebody. This is all left up to one single individual who does not do enforcement, in my personal opinion. Okay, um, I think we need to have a system, maybe it's two, three qualified individuals that look at photos and come up with an agreement so that we can all kind of go, hey, two people say yes, then it's enforceable. All three say no, then it's not. Okay, so it doesn't give me confidence in what we do out here. This property has been discussed on length, seven, um, we've talked about it in the previous, we had seven of you guys here, and I believe that we were in agreement, at least most of us were, that the situation is being mishandled. We even had some individuals who um, expressed their own direct experiences with this ordinance and the failure of this ordinance. This reinforces from the need for more collaborative enforcement processes rather than leaving it to one official. Beyond procedure, community impact is real and deeply felt. Multiple neighbors in my area are affected by this condition. Um, we have, and I think we talked about this, we're looking at one of the changes, hopefully to the ordinances, making it to that so that it is not have to be a public, you know, you can go in anonymously, which I think really helps because I have, I talked to several neighbors and all of them want to report, but they don't because they're concerned. I have an elderly neighbor, she's over ninety years old, sits in her front bay window every day across the street from that home. Luckily, I have a new fence up, because you guys allowed me to put one. She is probably more subjected to this nastiness than I am. Well, my wife and my family, okay? Um, our property values. What if I wanted to sell my property tomorrow? I highly doubt that I'm gonna get what I want. This vis- this visible neglect could be an easy deciding walk away factor. Yes, homeowners can change the color of their house, they can remodel interiors. We've heard it, people say, geez, I'm not buying the house because the wall's purple. Well, can't you imagine it brown? Nah, I'm not paying for that. Well, I can't do nothing about property that's next door. Um, this homeowner has clear disregard for the well-being of her neighborhood, exploits the gap in enforcement. This is not a new issue. This has been going on way before I bought the property into, or we bought the property in two thousand nineteen. To be forthcoming, we have not submitted an additional blight complaint for what you've seen for the additional last action. I just wanted to get some, we're currently uh, filling out that paperwork, but I did want to see again, while this is going under review, because I know reviews don't get done within a day. Okay, I know it's gonna take a substantial period of time. So if there's any way that this board or how, I don't know how the government, how this aspect works, that some type of emergency measures can be taken, maybe it's a vote, maybe it's temporary enforcement action, assigning two other, another individual to be with that light officer for the short term, if it's something that can be instantly voted on, maybe not here today per se, but something of that nature that can try to help myself, my neighbors, and the community. Um, I'd like to really try to push this blight ordinance as a major priority. Um, you know, again, I see what you guys talk about every day, every time I come here, you guys are very busy. I understand that, but I think this needs to be a top priority because it's not only gonna help me, it's gonna help the value of Portland. Um, again, reestablish how enforcement authorities structured, ensure the blight ordinance is enforced consistently fairly with community's interest in mind. Um, gotta really, blight officer really needs to take a look at that impact. The blight officer wanted to sell his home and he had that next door, or any of you, for that matter. We have to live with this. Um, another idea, and maybe I'm over, or maybe I'm going too far into what we're talking about for that ordinance, so is strengthen the ordinance. One thing that I don't see us do is enforce when somebody just does something over and over. She does it, she takes it down, rinse and repeat. She does it, takes it down, rinse and repeat. Sometimes within thirty days, three days, she has new stuff up. He comes, she takes it down, he checks her off, and then five days later, it's back up. Thirty days we follow up, thirty days later, forty-five days later. Um, if you have a cur- a violation that keeps happening, you keep hanging the same junk up, why do we have to keep on filling out a piece of paper? That should be instantaneous. Day one, tickets. Okay, so what I put in my, I definitely shortened out that thing. Please, if you can, take that time. Um, I just want to make sure that we all understand, the town has the authority and the responsibility to act decisively in protecting its neighbors. Just as you stated in your official site, the town of Portland is responsible for looking out and overseeing the town as a whole, protecting our financial and personal investments in our homes. Um, now, I'm not sure, I do want to say, I'm not sure exactly when you guys create these boards, how that works, if it's public can get involved. I'm here to offer myself as somebody to sit on a committee to look over this and help with potential rewrites or, you know, at worst case, I'd like to at least give you a two-page document that says these are my opinions, kind of like what I wrote here. So either way, I'd like to be involved in some way, whether it's just a public input or an actual committee that I could sit down and help try to change this for myself as well as the rest of our community. Okay, thank you for your time.
No, thank you very much.
Do we repeat your name again?
Jose Otero.
Okay.
Five Gloria Heights.
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, Jose, I mean, I've been following this since pretty much a month or two into, into this adventure, and I know what you guys have done, how you guys have suffered with this whole thing. And it's made me aware of the weaknesses in the ordinance that we have. Um, and, and I, I understand and get the frustration with consistent enforcement and consequences. Not just ordinance wise, but any, any rule out there. Um, I can assure you, we, we had talked about this a couple of months ago, when, when this came up before. I didn't realize how bad it was. I went by the other day and, and saw it up. I didn't know if the guilty plea and, and, and would make a difference or whatnot, and I'm so sorry, it hasn't changed. Um, but I will assure you that when we um, work on that, and it's something that we will be actively doing the weeks and months ahead, uh, I will pull you in, in whatever way I can, whether it's during a meeting, public comment, whether it's discussions that we have offline, whatever. Uh, but I think it's important to get that feedback from people who experienced this, have a neighbor like this. It's important. Um, none of us, none of us want a neighbor like that, and it does have a real impact, and it does conflict with several of our ordinances uh, and enjoyment of the property or whatnot, so um, you're not preaching, you're preaching to the choir because we hear you, but now you want action, and I understand that, and myself and my fellow board members, uh, we will pursue uh, making the changes necessary uh, after deliberation, and we'll try to include you in everything we can. Appreciate it. All right, thank you guys for your time.
No, thank you, and, and I was gonna suggest too that, you know, you look, when you look at the ordinance, there are provisions for fines, there are also provisions for cost recovery, um, if the town has to take action and do remediation. We should be looking into what those processes were. We have a recurring situation. There's already been a court, uh, you know, a plea that's been done uh, for, it sounds like for, separate than this, but we should be looking into, into all of that because I would agree with, with Mr. Otero, this shouldn't be something that, you know, this is now a known reported case. It shouldn't have to get re-triggered over and over and over again. We, we need to be looking at this more aggressively as to how we, how we address it.
Have we received a legal opinion that says that we cannot use our ordinance to enforce? Because it looks, as Jim said, the language is there.
The language is there. The biggest barrier to this ordinance has, is really, and it's one of the things that I look at, I mean, I think we can strengthen this, but one of the biggest barriers and one of the biggest concerns I've always had with this ordinance is the fact that it requires a neighbor to report another neighbor, which means you end up with this endless battle, right? It should be, you know, to me, well, we, we've talked about that, that, you know, a town official should have that ability that has that function and that training to do that function, to recognize blight in accordance with the town without somebody else having to call it out and put them into a neighbor-to-neighbor dispute.
But we have a neighbor here.
That's what I'm saying, but in this case.
Can I just give you clarification? I'll give you clarification on um, the initial uh, blight that we put in. Um, similar to the strings that you see on those first couple of photos, it was much worse than that going along what, when we had our property dispute, we won our property in an adverse possession uh,
Right, I remember you said that.
So when we showed you those pictures, all that stuff was strewn across the line. And when I talked to the um, building official, his comment was to me is, I can't handle fences. We don't take care of fences, and I said, well, caution tape is to block off an area. Party tape is to have a party, stakes are to hang your tomato plants on. I mean, I, I can send you an email that we went through, and I sent him a two-page document that said every single, a beer can sitting on top of it, that's garbage. And I told him all that, and he says, well, it's a fence, I can't do nothing, and it's less than four feet, so she has every right to erect it.
Yeah, so my.
So that's kind of the enforcement aspect that I'm talking about is that he's making his own, that one single individual is determining what is on that property, what is blight. Okay, so, and, and when I show, at least, you know, I think the average Joe, if I'd send everyone through this town and I said, please make a vote on whether you think that's blight or not, I think our vast majority of this town would say, yes, it's garbage, it's junk, it's not, it's meaningless.
I, I have looked at other ordinances around town when this happened, and we pulled it up from surrounding towns, and it's a clear, it's clearly.
Right, yes, and I have as well.
And the key is, right, we have, again, in our ordinance, like the barrier is getting a neighbor to report, right, and stand, you know, and um, in this case, we've actually met that threshold. We've got to look at within the terms to how, how we handle this within our current structure, and especially then look how we strengthen, make it better.
I, I would like to, I'd like to put this time, again, at the next meeting, um, to discuss this issue.
Sure.
Okay.
No, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Needs to be revised.
And I will be, we will be adding a new like complaint, just so you know, so I think the next meeting's in two weeks, so
Two weeks, yeah.
We might have an update of how things were handled.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to, and I want to.
And that might give a better input to where, and see if we're still in the same boat.
One other thing from personal, one of the surprises was, and I, I understand the reason why towns do that with neighbors, they're trying to uh, mitigate, they're trying to, you know, keep things, whatever, trying to keep things as calm as possible, the police do it, uh, I understand that. Um, but there's a case that the town has had where there's been violations over, I think, a nine-year period that only six months ago, when I first came in here, um, it was kicked up to a level that it should have been probably five years ago. Um, and, and I don't understand that, so that's, that's one of the surprises. So I understand your, your.
Well, Mike, what, what I don't get is you said the zoning and, or the blight enforcement officer, I don't know who, who this guy is, but um, he's giving you all these half-assed excuses as to why this isn't blight. Well, who the hell is this guy? If he's working for the town, I mean, maybe he needs a boot in the butt. Maybe he needs to, you know, get another job and we replace him and stop with all this bullshit.
It, but I think, I think the big, no, that.
Because I've had a blight issue at my house for twenty-three years and it, it never really got resolved because we don't enforce.
Um, I think we do both. I think we take care of.
I think you need a little clarification so that they feel they can enforce, but, you know, when you're putting things just to put them up.
Right.
And it, and, and it's not, I can understand if it was chicken wire fence and it was ugly.
Right.
Okay. She knows, she knows she's bothering us. That's, that's the thing. It, it, there was no, no purpose for her, hers is so, I knew where the line is. Well, the property stake was put in every three feet when they went through the middle of my property and we were fighting for it. I know where the property is, trust me, I'm fighting you for it, so.
Really appreciate it.
All right, we're, we're on.
We'll, we'll see you guys in two weeks.
See you in two weeks. All right. Yeah, we can keep those, we can get that, we're missing two. And, and I, and I do think consistency in the course is important across the board on everything. Uh, and we need to, we need to tie that up, so.
I think Mike, the issue is that, right, we passed the barrier. There's tools in the bag that aren't being used.
That's my play.
That's what we need to, we need to focus on that, and then see how we make everything else.
The, the, the item I'm interested in is that Mr. Otero said, the matter has gone to court.
Right.
She took the fence down, she complied, as soon as she was out of court, it went up again. I'd like to know if the town can work with that court order. What did that court order say? If it told her to take it down and leave it down.
Did, why, why don't you go up there?
That's a good question. Well, the reason, the reason for that is if you read the ordinance, if you have something that's been, if there's a court order, we may be able to have, for example, you may get to a point where we could have the town, we could have it removed, and the cost would be borne by the person who keeps putting it up.
And in accordance with her release, we have not gotten that paperwork yet, but my imagination was when I was talking with the state's attorney that was prosecuting, uh, there was nothing in there. It says, can't harass, can't threaten, you can't trespass, um, basically gotta leave us the heck alone. That I don't think would quantify, especially that we have a fence. We didn't have the fence up, maybe, but it's more of the aesthetic as we're driving by and the neighbors. So as far as I know, there was nothing in there that says, we never talked about that. Now, they have a concept called, there is a state civil action you can take. It's called spite fence. But again, my time, my effort, I lost days, but would I win in court? Probably, it's gonna take a year, but again, this is currently not across the property line. Now, this is strewn across her front yard, flagpoles to trees, to caution tape, to take a ride by. I mean, you guys got enough on the pictures. Obviously, feel similar that I feel. And, you know, obviously, something that it seems that you guys really want to rectify, and I appreciate that, um, but you know, so that's where we are. Yeah, there's nothing, unfortunately, because if there was, I'd be the first one to call the police, so. I, I had no hesitation to get her arrested, um, if, if I feel.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was alluding to, and that, I think the action that she had was for the trespass and the theft versus, right, versus something adjudicated now.
Yeah, I did, I did ask.
Town has remedies in here that they can look at it, and if there was some sort of a, a court order that said you can no longer do this and you need to maintain it, or, and if you do, the town has the rights to do that. Then, you know, that's what we have to look at. We have to look at the whole process.
I, I suggest when you get a copy of that court order, if you could provide first selectmen with a copy, that, that may be helpful.
Absolutely.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, because you never know, there might be some word in there.
Some word in there.
One word in there that changes the legal aspect behind the scenes.
It's not just for you.
I will, I will provide that on the next uh, meeting if I'm available to come here, at least. I tried my best, I might be out of town, but, but, we'll see.
There'll be a meeting after that.
There we go, appreciate it.
But if you come to the meeting after that, we will not be here somewhere else.
Okay. Okay.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
I'll make it here.
There you go. You'll find us.
The library.
You'll find us.
Yeah, we'll be at the library.
So, not that far away, even closer. All right. Thank you. I really appreciate coming down. All right. Now's the fun part of the meeting. We have Tom coming up with our monthly budget report. That was public, oh, that was, that was public, that was public comment right there. Oh, wait a second. Do we have anybody else on?
Public comment.
Oh, there isn't a jump in the gun. No, okay, good.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good night.
So we, uh, s- 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 end out a little earlier, the, uh, revenue reports and the expense reports, uh, for the general fund. Um, revenues, um, you know, uh, first couple of months of the year. Um, state hasn't, uh, paid too much in yet on the revenues, but the property taxes have come in. There's pretty good collections on the current year. It's been some decent collections on, um, the prior year as well as interest and liens. So we'll keep moving forward on those. We shall expect, uh, you know, the state money to start coming in, uh, now. Um, on the property rental, um, we've had, uh, some, they came in for the, uh, July rent from the brown zone, around a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And O'Kell paid, uh, one of their payments for about twenty-three thousand. Um, s- town clerk's activity wasn't in yet for, uh, August at this time, uh, in the report. And, uh, structural permits, there's, they're doing pretty good summertime. So it's a, a busy time for them. They're, they're, they're a busy group. Um, that's really what I have on revenues.
Yeah.
The expenditures, um, again, years, uh, second month of the year. Um, things are going pretty well on expenses. Couple of areas of just to watch. Um, throughout the year, here is on page seven, uh, department vehicle maintenance, equipment repairs, um, the, uh, there are some encumbrances outstanding. There's some expenditures spent, but it's more, uh, we've had a, a need for quite a few tires on, on, um, uh, trailer. One of the trailers had eight tires. It uses, um, the, the carts around a lot of the equipment in the highway division. Uh, there was some fire, uh, some fire equipment that needed some tires. Um, and, and some vehicles. So I just wanted to bring that up. There was, you know, um, the, they, they're getting good, they're getting the pricing either state contract or via, uh, the competitive quoting, but it's just, there are a lot of tires and they're, and they're expensive. Um, so we'd, we, we're seeing that. So it's fun to bring that up. So it's a watch, uh, Jason and, and, uh, and, uh, the, uh, vehicle maintenance team will, will continue to watch that throughout the year. And, um, town building maintenance, that's page eight. Um, that's the equipment, uh, repairs. That, uh, that budget, we has a $7,000 budget. Usually do pretty well in this, in this budget. But already this year, we already are over, uh, on that line item. There have been, there were a few, uh, repairs that, there was one repair from last year that, uh, wasn't able to get complete, uh, for, um, some warranty work on a fire heat exchanger at company two. That's going to be around $2,400. Uh, we, uh, I think Jason alluded to, there were some repairs here on the sidewalk from the Buck Foreman building. That was around $860. Um, there is some repair alarms. After the inspection at the senior center, there were some pair alarms that were, uh, came out that were required to be done for about $2,900. Uh, library roof had, um, some water coming in in the roof area, which, uh, uh, may or may not be associated with some, uh, um, it was like some water that was coming through like the windows or some of the masonry. So, uh, we wanted to make those improvements to see if that would, you know, remedy the water that was kind of coming possibly under the, the water, the roof there. So that work has been completed in the exterior. So now they're just watching to see if that will remedy, um, some of those other matters. The other, uh, component's been about $1,700 of fire alarm panel repairs of, um, of just ones that were emergency, ones that may or may not have been under contract. So, um, so, you know, they'll keep watching that. Um, we do have some building maintenance funded, Fund 11 that we'll, we'll watch and they'll keep, uh, you know, going over the global budget and, and trying to monitor us throughout. Um, if, if they continue at this level, then obviously we'll, we'll keep, you know, we'll, we'll talk again. But, um, those are, um, all things that were needed to be done and, you know, are, are getting done. So that's a, a, an important component. So those are the areas really that I have, you know, concerns at this point and just wanted to bring those to you. Um, you know, we're getting, uh, you said it's third week to have, uh, Jason here. So we're, you know, getting, um, you know, through some of those, uh, the projects and it's good to have someone here full-time on that. So that'll be good and, uh, we'll get, hopefully get everything working good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Any questions at all?
You good? I'll set Tom. Thank you. All right. I see we have, we have Elwin in the audience today. What a coincidence. So appointments of boards and commissions. Is there anyone here that has an opening that would like to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Elwin Giles for the, uh, Brownfield Area Steering Committee.
I'll, I'll, I'll second Elwin.
He's willing to serve. All right, Jim seconds. Um, any discussion?
I don't, I don't. I questioned the whole idea, but you know. No, Elwin's got a lot of experience doing this. So.
Has a lot of.
Thank, thank you for being willing to serve.
All right. I think, I think so. That's gonna be great. All right. Time to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Elwin, you're part of another group. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Lot of work to do in the next couple of months. Yes. All right, uh, refunds of excess payments. Our normal guy Bobby's not here. Who wants to read them?
You know what? I'll read them for old time's sake.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't done this in a couple of years, so.
Dust it off.
I'll make a motion that we reimburse, um, I guess, uh, force for read in the amount of $57.53.
I'll second it. All right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, it passes.
I make a motion, we re- refund VW Credit Leasing Limited in the amount of $387.93.
I'll second that one. All right, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, passes.
Make a motion that we reimburse Vault Trust in the amount of $621.93.
I'll second that. Uh, so we got a second down here. It was a little faster than you, John.
Jumping in.
All right. He feels left out.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we refund to Nissan Infinity Lease Trust the amount of $479.11.
Rick, it's your turn.
Second.
Just me. Rick.
We're, we're gonna really get you.
That's it. Mess with Sharon. That's nice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion passes.
And make a motion that we refund to Craigie Bishara, $393.74.
I'd like to second that.
There you go.
Okay, Michael.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion passes.
I'm gonna check every one of these in the minutes and then. I make a motion that we, we refund to Global Tech Systems LLC, the amount of $152.12.
I'll second that. Right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstention, motion passes. Two more.
And make a motion that we refund the, refund to 4G JG LLC, $224.69.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion passes. One more.
And I'll make a motion that we rot, refund it to Amanda C. Ives, the amount of $93.29.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion passes. You got it all?
Hopefully you.
I like that laid out there.
Read the minutes before next meeting.
Um. Again.
Were you able to hear me? No? No? Okay.
Just okay? I leaned in. Very nice. All right, status reports. Status reports.
Um. Yeah, so we'll, uh, since the last meeting, we haven't had, um, another Parks and Rec meeting yet. That's scheduled for this coming, uh, Monday. Um, and we haven't had, we have also scheduled as our water and sewer meeting, but we have had and been, you know, with the water, from a water and sewer perspective, um, we've obviously been working and continuing to work on the negotiations with MDC. Um, without getting into too much detail, we did have a meeting with the MDC, I believe it was what, last Thursday, Mike? Um, we, we had our, you know, our, our attorney, we had, uh, Jason was there, Mike, myself. Um, uh, you know, Mike Lastrina, uh, and Billy was there, as well as Rich DeRozers from GZA. So we were able to talk about it from our perspective. Uh, we laid out, you know, uh, you know, sort of a, our, our negotiating position, uh, for how we'd want to move forward in timeline. And, um, I believe that we are slated to have additional discussion with the board, um, probably, uh, I believe next week that is scheduled for.
Yes, yes. With which board?
MDC board.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know how much more I, in detail you'd want to.
That's good.
I think that kind of covers it without, yeah.
Yeah, agreed. Board of Education?
Sure.
Uh, I went to the meeting last evening. Um, I'm trying to read my scribble. Angela Hammond has stepped down and Tim can correct me if I got these notes wrong, but my understanding is Republican Tom Committee will be putting a new person in and they'll be discussing it at the next meeting.
Right, yeah, we've already endorsed somebody for that, but the way their bylaws work, you need to announce it at the, right, one meeting and then act on it the next meeting.
Right. So that was, that was item number one last evening. Um, they talked about the nomination for Portland Educator of the Year. Dylan Bernard from Portland High School. And the parent educator of the year is Mayor Mallory Rowley, Rowley from Valley View. Um, they listed, and I, they went so fast I couldn't get them, but they listed a number of teachers with year of service awards. And there was an individual that has 45 years with the school system. And I, I didn't have a chance to catch that one. I apologize for that. Um, the superintendent talked about the first day of school and it, he said, knock on wood, it pretty much went off smoothly without a hitch. The only problem that they had, for a day or two, they had a bus delay of almost an hour. Uh, and apparently it's a bus that is shared with Vinyl. And the delay was on their end, caused on their end, not ours. So that was pretty, rectified pretty quickly when they spoke with Vinyl. So I guess that's, that's all repaired. Um, total enrollment this year has actually gone down a touch. Uh, last year was 1,217. This year it's 1199, 1,199. Uh, and they believe that a lot of this is the anticipated increase in enrollment in kindergarten because of that age change. And they didn't see the number. Um, but that was, that was kind of unexpected, but it's not an enormous number. Um, they also gave an update that the part of the boiler replacement for BIS is onsite and the other half is in transit. So the intention was to get that boiler replaced before cold weather gets here. And again, knocking on wood, it looks like it will be here and be installed on time. Um, was interesting. The principal, uh, and a number of other teachers, I guess, as, as you may recall, I reported last meeting that the high school is going phoneless for the students and the teachers. Uh, and they had, he had a very cool T-shirt. It was a black T-shirt. Written in white ink. It had a picture of a cell phone in the middle and on top it said, off and away. And there, during the day, and it had a big circle and an X across the phone. And apparently the, the, the principal and a lot of the teachers, as I understand it, wore them. And the kids thought it was great. They got a real kick out of it. They said, overall, the concept went very well. So, um, all is good there. And they discussed a, um, strategic capital report a bit. And there was a vote to, um, move the funding as they do every year for the Portland High School band trip to the Big E for Connecticut. Tip.
Beautiful. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah.
You got some.
Um, well, just a little bit of rehash from last week or last week.
Um, she didn't get closer to the mic?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Um, the cleanup day with the River Access Committee, um, at the new River Access Park launch site is, uh, September 27th. And I spoke with Lou Hare, while I've been texting with him because he's away, about trying to change the start time, but I'm not sure it's gonna work out because he's, he's already got us registered, um, at a morning time. I, I think he said nine o'clock. Um, I know, Tim, you mentioned the road race. I think it was that day.
Oh, right. Yeah, the town road race.
Yeah, is that 10 o'clock?
I'm pretty sure it's 10.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, it'd just be a shame because I know, I've, I know myself and other people would like to help with the cleanup.
Yeah.
But what's the date on that? The 20?
27th. Um, I'm, Lou's getting back. I think tomorrow we're supposed to talk on Friday. So next meeting, I'll, we'll have an exact time, but that's, that's the day we're, we're registered with Connecticut River Conservancy. They're providing us with a dumpster. Um, so hopefully we have a, at least, you know, can get 10 or 15 people down there to help, um, with that cleanup. And then the committee, um, they, they're talking about a formal sort of groundbreaking ceremony on October 11th. Uh, I believe that's a Saturday.
Saturday morning, yeah, 10 o'clock?
Okay, yeah. Um, so that might be something, you know, townspeople might want to come, maybe some, some of the board of selectmen. Uh, maybe we get the River East there or we can do a press release.
Absolutely.
Um, so anyway, things are moving along there.
Okay, Greggy? And how about you? I've got a bunch of stuff.
Uh, yeah, no, let me get ahead of you, Mike, because you're gonna suck all the oxygen out of me.
I'm gonna try not to.
Yeah, I just have the, I attended the Portland Library Board of Directors meeting on August 21st. Great meeting. Jen keeps him, him live, keeps things on track. Um, a couple of things they talked about, we had, uh, can you hear me okay?
You're good.
I'm saying.
Uh, one of the things we talked about was chairs for our meeting. When our meetings move over to the lo-, uh, to the library, that their, the feeling is that the chairs we have here are outsized and too much of a inconvenience to, you know, logistically move about and store there. So Jen got a, uh, a demo chair. So I, I would encourage everyone, everyone to go down and check it out and see. It's, it's very well cushioned. Um, it's, it's not much more wide than one of the folding chairs, but it's, you know, very cushioned, it's got a good back. It's got a little bit of a, I think it had a little bit of a spring to the back of it. Um, but it's not like it, you know, it doesn't recline or anything. There's no arms on it. Um, but, so we'll have a decision to make about what we want to do, um, in that regard. Um, the other thing I, and I wanted to talk about, bring, is that there was a discussion about policy. There was a number of policies that Jen's working on with the board. And one of them was a revision to the program policy. And there was some language in the program policy about, um, the, the Jen is recommending to the board that they look at to consider for removal. Um, and I don't, to frame it kind of neutral, it was, it was, it was language that really, the feeling was they weren't able to, uh, to make it work. So why not just take it out? And this was language around, um, when there's programs that it was targeted for children's programs that, you know, you, you would admit people into the program, but if, if there were too many people, then, then there were slots available that the, uh, Portland children would be considered the priority. They would get used to the program versus people from out of town. And that was the language they wanted to remove because it, 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 it just saying, you know, logistically and with the software and with the labor involved, that it's not, uh, it's not really feasible for them to actually achieve that, to, you know, limit their programs to prioritize the Portland residents. you know, limit their programs to prioritize to Portland residents. So I, I just reached up to Jen after the meeting and I, you know, I just, my position on that was that, you know, we, we spend a lot of money as taxpayers on Portland Library and we should, you know, I wouldn't be in a rush to remove that language and to, um, not aspire to make sure children from Portland are prioritized. And, um, and I know it's, it, there's logistical challenges to that and Jen is, we've emailed back and forth on that. Uh, but that's just my thought on it. And so that's my report on the library.
Did you order?
Am I going to hit this mic with my computer? The answer is no. Hi, I'm Jen Billingsley, the library director. Um, so yes, that's a, uh, that's a fair summary of the conversation and email threads we've been having. Um, and I wanted to take the time to listen if anybody had other, if the board has feedback and I'm happy, I mean, Tim, you'll obviously give that to the library board and then I can also take notes. That's why I brought my laptop up here. If there's other thoughts about it, I wanted to capture as much as possible. Um, if, uh, we're talking about aspirational policies, my, I, I agree with you for that piece of it. And maybe the answer instead of striking the language is to change it to when possible, we will prioritize Portland children or, or Portland, Portland residents or people in the care of Portland residents. Um, that, that would allow it to be aspirational and still not have us be in, um, unable to do it. From what I can tell, um, when we were evaluating software, when the library was evaluating software, that would reserve, make possible for, to reserve meeting rooms and talk in the backend and allow for people to register for programs and allow for people to receive reminders and allow for a waiting list to exist. What, what was not possible with all of those pieces included was this ability to separate residents from non-residents because the registration software doesn't maintain a database of users. Every time you sign in and register for a program, I'm sure if y'all have registered for library programs, you're having to type your name and your email just like you're doing it for the first time unless your browser remembers you. Um, and so functionally, what we are not able to do with our current software and, um, which I would have been trying to talk to other libraries that are local about whether it is possible or not, uh, within reasonable cost is uh, is to have multiple streams because you're essentially asking the software to authenticate against a Portland library card. But you're depending on that adult or that child to have their library card on them to be able to register for the program. And that they will, uh, and that the correct human being who has the Portland residency is the one who's doing the registering. Because the other thing it's meant to do is to contact, in, in the case of teenagers, the person who is giving them the ride often. But, um, in the case of children, it's the caregiver, it's the, it's the person who is doing the logistics of it. Yes, yes.
How old are the, the rules, the, the documents that we're talking about?
The last, the last.
Predate computer appointments?
Not possibly for, for this version of the software, I believe so. I don't believe that we've been spring share customers. So that the last time this policy was touched was two thousand seventeen. And normally I wouldn't be trying to push this through, but we're, um, the reason why we're updating all of these policies is because uh, there's statutory requirements and if we don't hit them by October, we don't, we're not eligible to receive state funding anymore. So there's a whole bunch of information coming at my board members right now, and they've been very patient and I appreciate them.
So one other question?
Yes.
What other libraries do what Tim is proposing?
Great question. So I polled, well, so I looked at and then reached out to the directors of our closest neighbors. So Middletown doesn't require registrant.
Honestly, that's what, that's the thought I had because with my children and with my grandchildren, I've signed up and attended many times at Russell Library.
Yeah.
And I was never asked if I was a Middletown resident. So I was curious how many others do it.
Middletown doesn't, East Hattam doesn't, East Hampton doesn't, and Cromwell doesn't. Um, the only library that I could find locally that does is Glastonbury, but they have a substantially larger staff and, uh, their director was incredibly gracious and walked me through their registration process. And I believe that they need all twenty five of their part timers to do it. So, um, I, she talked me through it and I was like, oh, uh, there's like a, there's a Google sheet and then there's a lottery system and, um, people don't find out whether they're in until like the week before the program. I feel like that would actually stress Portland families out a little bit more, um, than doing anything different. And, um, the other piece of this is that they, Glastonbury is also doing this verification by hand. They're making people come in for the first time if they're registering for a program and want to do it and saying that they're a Glastonbury resident. They're having to come into the library before they can have that approved registration period, um, which ideally we're seeing people, um, but sometimes, I don't know, I would hate, I would hate for a family to miss out on, yeah. I would hate for a family who like registered on time to miss out on something because they couldn't manage to have the adult get here when we're open. So.
So is there a way, Jen, you could modify that language a little bit to make it a little flexible? That would also comply with the state's requirements so we don't lose our funding?
So th- this is not, so this piece of the language is not state statute required. So, and I did actually verify with Dawn, uh, the, one of the, um, Division of Library Development heads at the State Library. Um, and we actually, we do have a little bit of leeway. We do need unapproved policy. So a decision has to be made and it has to be live and on our website. But they can certify that the rest of the, the policy is compliant. Um, and so we'll still be eligible as, as long as we pass, as long as something is passed, um, with this, the new language inside of it as well.
So it sounds like your, the, the goal you've got right now is to update the policies so that the way you currently have to operate based on what you have for software and staff.
Yeah.
You're compliant with the policy, right? But, um, understanding that, I, I guess what I'm looking at is it probably makes sense then to look at the aspirational language.
Yeah.
Right? Because it is the right, it's, I think it's the right direction to have that aspiration.
Yeah.
But the policy needs to get updated before we would be able to implement or, or even fund or come up with, you know, a workable solution. Uh, that way you can be operating in compliance with your policy, but it still gets us to the direction where we need to go.
Yes.
And the other question is that, um, how often from a library perspective, are we turning folks away from programs? And I would imagine from what I've seen anyway, or from what I experienced when we were raising our kids, if you needed more, a lot of times the, it, it may be okay. If you can't make Tuesday, Thursday, you can make the one they do on Wednesday, you make the one they do an hour later. But I mean, how, how often are we running into the situation now where we're turning
So.
Portland folks away?
We're not tracking how often we're turning Portland folks away, but we do track wait, like the waitlist. And Jen and Patty do the most incredible, so when I came into the position, that's what I talked about with Jen and with Patty. And what they do is they'll offer double a storytime. And so if they notice that there's a waitlist, that there's no movement on, nobody is canceling, like Jen just offered two of the same storytime, one after the other for, until that, that those people aged out of that availability on Tuesday mornings. Um, for like the stuffed animal sleepover, which is an incredibly popular program, um, that did have a super long waitlist right up until, uh, I'd say like the week of where people realized, oh, we registered for this, but we're out of town. What she did was she just, she stretched it. She made it work. Um, and the friends who are the financial sponsors of our, uh, all the, all of the programming supplies and funds and, uh, the presenters. They have always said, if you need, if you need additional, if additional money, if additional funding makes the difference between having enough kids have access to this, ask for it and we'll say yes if we can. And so, and they have, so, um, yeah.
So situationally, uh, by and large, we're able to accommodate the kids that want to come.
I'd say.
It, it sounds, so then this is, sounds like this right now is more an issue of making it so that we're able to operate in compliance with the policy.
Yeah.
And still maintain, you know, I think the, the goal of, we always want to make sure we're taking care of our, our Portland residents.
Okay. Um, and yes, so I, I did a quick look. So we have, we've opened our fall storytimes right now and storytimes are a hot commodity. There's not a lot of free things to do with children under like between that like two to four year range. And so storytimes are a hot ticket. Um, right now of the nine families on the waitlist for the Wednesday ten fifteen AM program, four of those families are signed up for the eleven fifteen. So for it like, so it's, it's, there, there's a preference. And so some of the waitlist is just, but you don't know that until you're really looking at the guts of every, every single individual program. So, um, and I'm happy to like take a look at this and monitor it and even ask for people, maybe zip, maybe zip code is the way to add a field and have that be, have that be something, um, where we're asking for that information. Um, but we would have to manually check that piece of it. And again, it becomes like a, is this the adult or is this the child? Who is this? Um, so, yeah.
That kind of falls into the phraseology you provided earlier, you know, do our best to accommodate or something. I think that until such time, I would think that you have the, the technology or the staffing to ensure that Portland residents will always get a spot.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we want to promise that.
Yeah.
But we can say that we'll do our best that.
Yeah.
At that bottom.
And there's waits, yeah, and there's, yeah, agreed. And I think that that's, that like what you were talking about, Tim, if it's aspirational, then it's like a striving, then it's like, if we can do this, then we do do it.
Well, I, I think what you said, maybe the word is, you know, to the extent practical based on the technology.
Yeah.
You know, and but, um, but I think it, you know, it wasn't clear to the extent people were being turned away from it, from, from programs, I think, but we had talked about it at the, uh, at the meeting. But the other, in terms of the point I was, I was gonna make with the, in terms of the software, has there been a discussion with the vendor to what, if anything could be done to create a field?
So you, so you, you have the ability to ask them to authenticate against a library card, but they would not, but it doesn't. The person who has the library card isn't necessarily the person who's the Portland resident, if that makes sense, because we have some people who.
Well, sure, if you have a grandparent from out of town bringing a child.
And, and that, that two-year-old, that parent might be like, I'm absolutely not signing this two-year-old up with their old library card because I can't manage a single another account in my life. So I think that that's like, that's the other, that's the other piece of that. Um.
Do you have to have a library card in order to avail yourself of a program?
No.
No, it's a big problem.
So, um.
This reminds me in many ways, and I, I complain about it. My kids think I'm crazy, but I miss the days of the telephone book.
Mm-hmm.
Now they're, they're looking at somebody's name and their phone number will not tell you what town they live in, much less what state they live in, because the area codes don't even line up. So it, it's, I would imagine unless you have a certain significant number of detailed data elements in that website, an email address, a, a cell phone number and a name, isn't necessarily going to tell you they're a Portland resident?
And some people have different emails that they're like, so, and some people have, go by a, a different, like a nickname, or they're actually putting the child's nickname in, like, because that's how the, the, it's, it's hard, it's hard to parse out. Each one is kind of individual. Um, and also there's, there's mixed groups of families. There's families where there, it's a caregiver and one kid is a Portland resident and the other kids are not because they're staying with this kid. And how do you handle that piece of it? So, um, we had a, we have a teen lock-in, which is, that is, the teen lock-in is one where we do, we do not have enough spaces because if you get more than twenty five teenagers in a room closed, it becomes, twenty five is the sweet spot and I trust Jen's judgment on that. Um, but, and we had some people who, um, were canceled and weren't able to, weren't able to come. And so we had a parent, Jen reached out to a parent and said, hey, I have a spot if you want it. It's tonight though. Can you make it? If not, I'll move to the next person. And that parent said, uh, yes, but we, we arranged a sleepover. We didn't with a, with a kid from like another kid, that's, can they come too? Or because we, we needed something in case this didn't happen and there was disappointment. And so Jen was able to like figure it out and call in another volunteer and say yes. And so I want to, like, it's.
It's not always good.
Yeah, that's the, and so the, the, a little bit more flexibility in the wording is.
Well, yeah, anything you could do in that regard?
Well, and I think that's right, and that's part of it, right? It's not just the software piece and all that aspirational. It's the work the staff does.
Yeah. So. Any other, any other questions or thoughts?
Tell us about the chairs.
Yeah, so we have, okay, so we have one more. Um, we have.
No, Jen, we like our chairs.
I know you do. Um, and I hear that you like the arms on the chairs. So boy, do I have an offer for you. We're also having another sample possibly dropped off by our friends. Um, I think next Wednesday they're going to drop off another one with, it's got a mesh back, but, um, and a cushioned seat and, and it's got arms. Because I think also it's nice to offer, like if people need a, a hand getting up out of your chair, I think that's a nice thing to have available as well. So, um, there's another.
Conference room chair.
Except they're, they're kind of. I'll send you photos. That's what I'll do. I have a whole, I have a whole product sheet. So, um, I didn't, there's so many different options with casters and I was like, why do I, I'd never wanted to know this much about chairs, but now I do. So, um, yeah, I'll send them out. So, yeah, and I'll let you know when they're there if you want to come and take one for a spin.
No pun intended.
Yeah, I, what we really would love is ones that are stackable. These ones aren't stackable in any way. Um, so otherwise I guess they're, they're possibly going to live in my office with me if you decide you really want these ones over with you. I'll figure it out. Okay. Any other questions?
Think we're good. Okay.
No, I'm good.
Thank you, and thank you for taking my phone call very late the night if you have that email.
It's all good.
Thank you.
It's all good. Thanks, John.
So, so speaking of going to the library, this will be our second to last meeting here. So enjoy the chairs you have. One more meeting.
I'm not, I'm not looking like giving them up yet.
Yeah. Have to pry your cold hands off.
Decision. We used before over.
They actually, no, these are what was there, yes.
I said, that's these.
Yeah, these were there. They stayed in the room.
I think that stood in the back room.
Yeah, they have so much stuff back there.
They, 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 the chairs were right out against, they would go up against the wall and the other side of the table that was there, because the table was always set up.
Hmm, they, they got so much.
Because remember that, that room that used was meeting after meeting after meeting. So.
Now it's being used for other functions at meetings, I guess, so.
So October eighth. We're gonna go in there. So.
Why did we move on it?
COVID.
COVID.
Oh, COVID. And, and, and a team will be, uh, assembling after our next meeting here two weeks from now. Did we pick the day that we will be bringing everything over there and getting it set up? These guys have worked magic to get that room set up. So we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, the, the issue was they needed, this was, this room was more conducive to doing the video, to do the video stream.
All right, so, but we'll still be doing videos from there, but they'll set it up in that small room, uh, the video room and get the camera set up. They've got, you guys got a nice design.
Well, they used to video.
They used to video them there, but it was just a, a picture of everybody at the table.
But it's going to be even better somehow.
Wow, yeah.
Expectations to hear, I think, so. All right, very good. So I have, I'm gonna go quickly through this. I think last time I tried and I still rambled on for a half an hour. This will be ten minutes tops.
Okay, you, you heard it here. Okay.
Give me a one minute warning. All right.
Okay.
Couple of things on here. So, uh, it is coming down to the end of the season at the Brownsville Exploration Park. The last Portland day uh, is going to be this Saturday, September sixth. So if you want to go jumping off a cliff or ziplining, uh, and you're a Portland resident and you could prove it and maybe a library card carrying resident, uh, you can get in there and enjoy it for re-identifying. Is that loud enough? Very nice. Uh, speaking of Saturday, John and I will be at the Voices of Portland event this Saturday at the library from one to two thirty. John will be giving a little spiel. I will be giving a smaller talk, uh, and then we'll.
My small talk too.
Oh, mine's gonna be a lot smaller. That much. But we're excited about that. The Portland Historic Society is putting it together along with the, uh, the Solidarity Committee and the Portland Library. So very excited about that. That's gonna be great. We can have a hundred people there, a hundred fifty? Seventy for Fireco, no more than seventy. So excited about that. So come on down.
I think I registered for that. Testing the registration system.
Yes. We'll, we'll all test the same thing. Um, we're gonna bounce real quickly to police and fire. City of Middletown gives us monthly a call statistics with our call center in Middletown. Last month, Portland Fire, uh, Portland Police Department had four hundred ninety-one calls, four thousand and nine total for the year, five hundred and one average per month. So they kept busy last month. Fire Department had sixty-three calls in August. Uh, they have five hundred and forty-two for the year. Uh, they have five hundred and forty-two for the year. They averaged sixty-eight calls a month. So, uh, they do a great job for us. We're very happy with what they do. They respond very quickly. When there's an event in Portland like the fire, uh, on Airline Avenue, uh, we had, I think everyone in town, plus some poor, uh, some Middletown people that showed up for that porch fire. So we respond very quickly. That is great. Thank you for doing that. I have an interesting one here that I've talked to some of you about this. Um, over the years, the town has leased land for farmers, uh, got a farmer's rented acres. Um, other farms, uh, rented acres of Portland property and they've grown props on there. I had a recent visit from Joe Engel and his wife Michelle. They run a flower business and they've identified an area at the end of the end of Middlesex Avenue. Uh, it's about three acres, two point eight acres right next to Joe Mullins Farm. Uh, it's along the walking trail when you go in the path.
They wanted to put a dog park at one part.
Yes, I think it was what, yeah, we, we considered dog park until we heard from dog owner that they said no. Um, but yes, so he approached us. They loved it. Grow flowers there and do something with it. I threw the idea out that maybe we can have uh, some folks, you know, uh, grow some vegetables, do other things there. I know we have a property right now, um, in a different part of town. But, um, he wanted to do something with that, a pick-your-own, uh, flower growing thing. So I'm bringing it to you today because he's presented a proposal to me. Um, it's an interesting idea. It's unused property right now.
Stick folks on Homestead Avenue that sell flowers, right?
Um.
Right across from the town hall.
Yes, yes. Right. In fact, I spoke to him one time, just, I didn't know who he was, uh, went up there and said, what a beautiful flowers you have. Got the whole spiel on what they do. Uh, he's come to the town hall a couple of times already, but he's interested. Uh, I think it's a great idea. I've, uh, he's willing to get insurance. Um, I've looked at some of the old leases that we had before.
Town land.
It's town land, uh, but we've done that with. And I will make a copy of all this for you guys. So this is, if you follow Middlesex Avenue extension down, if this is, this is where you would walk behind Co-Abode Pump Station and then the park is over here.
Okay, so this is the parcel.
Yeah, and it's about two point eight acres. Uh, it's fenced off right now. It's fenced off right now, uh, but it's right along the walking path. So you go back past the gate, you'll follow the road back and it ends up in the park. And if you continue on, it ends up where the.
So if you're walking out of the park, you get down to the gate and that's the property you're talking about.
And the property's on the left-hand side. So it's easy to access. Um, you know, there's still some details to be worked out, but there's a lot of interest. Uh, the land is available. Uh, we have a history of doing that in the past with other acreage that, uh, other farms in town have leased from us. Uh, we still have to come up with pricing. We still have to, you know, look at the plan. There's no water right now down there, but there is the pump station. You know, a hundred and fifty yards up there. So we don't know if we can hook it up. So there's still discussion to be done. But I like the idea. Um, I, I like some enthusiasm. We have to look at some details. I'm looking for the board for feedback. I'll talk to other towns and see what they've done. For example, in one of the leases we did, uh, we leased out ten acres. And back then, this is back in oh-five, oh-seven, they leased out for seventy dollars an acre for the year, like completely, very inexpensive. Um, because they would be, you know, growing, uh, growing flowers and selling them. I don't know if that's how it is with other, you know, other farm, other farming that's been done on town land, but I wanted to discuss it. I wanted to start discussing this.
Is this something you want to send us out some information so we can be ready to discuss that?
Absolutely. And, uh, Joe, who I've, again, I've had a couple of discussions with, he's willing to come here at the next meeting to kind of discuss his idea in more detail. Again, information out to you before then.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'd love to invite him for that next.
Well, just, just remember, we also, the issue we talked about earlier tonight.
Right.
Is on next meeting too, and that could take a lot of time.
It could. I'll, I'll leave it up to him to decide whether, you know, how long he thinks it'll take, but between now and then I'll catch information on there. But he's pretty enthusiastic about it. I think it's great. I think we may have missed this season, but certainly for the next season is probably worth talking about it now. Uh, but again, I, I thought it was a great idea. And if we could find property that is unused right now, that we could do something with, I think that's great.
Yeah, I think that's kind of how I was looking at it is the, right, we're not gonna do much planting now anyway. So.
Yeah.
Uh, whether we discuss it next to it or the one following.
Right.
The, the blight, the blight issue is probably more pressing.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'll see. But worse comes, um, then if we don't do it at the next meeting, then certainly the October eighth one be a great way to kind of baptize the library, uh, or meeting there. But I'll let him know. We'll discuss it and I'll, I'll get back to all of you at that. And I'll let Bobby and Mike know what's going on with it as well. But I like the idea. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. We could do something with it. I have no problem with that. So. Um. We had the special, we had the, uh, we had the special meeting, uh, joint meeting with us, Board of Education and the committee. I want to reserve that for our informal discussion. So just remind me to do that. Um. The High Street Project. Um, I don't think he, uh, he discussed, uh, the details of that, Jason, but, uh, the state gave us the approval to go ahead with the remaining funds on the High Street project, the water replacement portion. Um, so we're gonna meet, uh, the twenty-third of this month and talk with Birmingham. They're the ones that did the project up there so far. I don't know if you guys have seen, but the, uh, they've kind of replanted grass in the areas that have been disturbed. Uh, we're gonna continue on probably another three hundred, four hundred fifty to four hundred feet. So we'll get a little farther with the money we have left. Um, but if any one of the self, you know, would like to be in, in that meeting, I know there were some issues that came up during the last phase of the construction project. Um, so we'll have our engineer, um, Jacobson will be there. Uh, we'll have Rick there. We'll have.
When is that, when is that?
That'll be the twenty-third. I believe it's at nine o'clock, but I'll confirm the time. Uh, but.
I can, I can probably swing over, because I, I think it'd be good to talk about.
Yeah.
And I, and I'll, I'll, just because of the, the potential conflict.
Right.
I'll stay away.
Okay, no problem. But, but again, uh, they're aware, but we'll, we'll be able to lease funding. For those that are watching, um, you know, we, we got a grant to do a significant amount of work. Uh, we had grant money left over and our choice was to give it back to the state or to have it continue on, but the state has to review and approve the plan to continue. We've done that. Um, Jacobson, uh, was able to put together the extension. Uh, it's been approved and now we're gonna, we're gonna extend it. So, uh, we were hoping to get the whole project done before school started, but now with school in session, uh, we need to kind of talk and meet about how we're gonna do that to minimize the impact. Traffic was a concern, um, to make sure we minimize the impact that traffic and school traffic. So that'll be part of the discussion. But, uh, again, I'll keep everyone informed, but, uh, to, uh, if you want to come, if anyone else wants to get there, I'll send you out the meeting.
Yeah, what's the date on it?
Uh, it's gonna be the twenty-third, uh, and I believe it's at nine o'clock, but I'll send the invite to you. So the more the merrier. Um, I think more feedback is the better. So, uh, between now and then, I, I suggest you talk to constituents at town. If you get some of their feedback and we can represent their points of view, uh, during the discussion, maybe what the concerns were. So. That's a good thing as well. Um. I've gotten a number of calls over the last two weeks since the last meeting about traffic and concerns about traffic. Um, it was spiked, uh, and, and exacerbated by the fatality that we had about a week and a half ago. Um, so I'm looking to, and I'm looking to all areas of the town where we've had concerns with speeding, or we've had concerns with traffic signs maybe needing to be put up. So I'd like an all-hands-on-deck approach from all of us here and all those maybe watching at home to let us know the areas that are concerned. Uh, I've talked to DOT, um, they're providing a couple, uh, traffic signal devices to the town that we can pick, uh, pick locations to put those in. That was as of earlier today.
When you say traffic signal, you're talking about.
Flashing lights. So, so they have, uh, they're providing several to us. Uh, we have to work our way through that, but that was something that because of what happened, I reached out to them. They've been very responsive. Uh, we have two traffic speed signs now, one on Main Street, uh, and one on. Gosh, I'm, I'm pulling a blank on the street. We've got two of that.
Talking about the radars.
Radar sets, it's saying.
Wasn't that High Street? Have one or?
Ames Hollow, it's, it's.
Coming down.
Bartlett, I think Bartlett has one as well. Those are two that just, yeah. So the one at Bartlett and Main Street, that same company's providing two more to us. So we have two more locations to put that up. So, so I guess the point is we're looking to make it as safe as possible. We're adding a stop sign to, um, to what it looked, uh, Middle Hatum Road. Um, so we're putting one there.
Cop car out there today.
Yep. They're looking at that. So on the, on the intersection of Pen.
Driving around Middletown, nothing modifies behavior better than a camera that sends you a ticket in the mail.
Absolutely.
Fortunately, that's, that's a bad.
Yes.
I go through there now, people, they just. And then as soon as they're through it, they put the hammer down, unfortunately.
A- absolutely, absolutely. And I know they've been quite successful. It's changed behavior.
I know you're looking at how we modify because of the, the challenge we have in Middle Hatum. Are we looking at modifying that intersection at all? Uh, and you got this really, this part of the problem.
Which, which, which intersection?
Well.
Middle Hatum and Penfield Hill.
So. Opens up very wide.
Yeah, it, it looks like a free-for-all and it's not.
It, it's not. So, so I've talked to Mike, the Lastrina, about what we need to do. We need, we need to modify that whole road because it does open up. It needs to be narrowed down and brought closer to the main road, which is why there's so much concern about that. Especially because it's right next to the, uh, the crossover for the airline trail. It's very close to there. So, um, we want to mitigate it with a stop sign now, one at least. Especially the one going toward the trail. Uh, that road becomes a bypass when there's something on sixty-six. So that gets a ton of traffic. So this is step one, but we need to look at that and modify that whole intersection. May require a second stop sign. But it's the cost of doing that. And it may be something we need to do with the state to get some funding.
That was actually what I was worried about is, is where the stop sign would be.
Right.
Coming up with, is that, I, I, you know, I've lived on that, the other end of that road for a lot of years.
Right.
You, you've seen it. When it, when there's a bypass, it is just boom, boom.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. You can't, I, I, I can't, can't walk across the street. No, I mean, it's just solid. Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's, it's the only path to get around the, you know.
The accident is.
And, and there's, and I gotta tell you, even, even the exit from my street, uh, right in that area, Icing Glass Hill Road, it's at the bottom of the hill. So you've got the traffic zipping down.
Oh, yeah.
You almost have to come to a complete stop. And I'm sure there's probably a dozen different places like that in the town that need attention. So.
Just out of curiosity, if, if there's a substantial cost involved with getting the stretch we're talking about safe.
Right.
Couldn't we rely on some support from the state since they are using that road as a bypass for their road? That's their, that's a state detour, right, for an accident situation. So if there's, if there's a traffic issue or a safety issue that somehow is exacerbated by their use of their road, can we use that as leverage on them?
I, I think the timing is good for that because, uh, even, even today, DOT just sent me today a package of some warning lights for, for, for traffic um, that we can use. There's at least two of them. There may be more. So that may be part of the conversation now that we have a couple of identified areas that we could use. And I think, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then again, we're speeding signs. We're moving another sign from Cox Road uh, to a different location on there where there's other residents that complained about speeding on there. Um, and we're hoping that we could put some kind of speed camera there to catch the same offenders all the time. The residents have taken pictures of people going by. They have cars there. Uh, we've put police there. It's right where the zigzags on Cox Road are going down the road. Zigzag and people are flying. And we know some of the people, the repeat offenders, some are young kids. Uh, the police get frustrated because they'll go there and sit for five hours and there's maybe only four or five people that go by. Um, so it's not the best use of their time. Uh, but, um, but I'm thinking of ways that we can still put cameras there, find out who they are, knock on some doors, do some other alternatives, maybe do some signage on the road. But again, there's, again, other places like that that we need to pay attention to.
Remember, it's, it's years ago, I commuted to college. I think it was either Rocky Hill or Cromwell, but used to put a cruiser along the main road with a CPR dummy dressed in a uniform sitting in the driver's seat. And, and you would, after you, you, you never knew if that was the dummy or, because they would interchange them, it slowed everybody down.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, well, the other suggestion I have that intersection, we should look at actually painting a stop line where it needs to be.
Right.
Right? We need, because that, that's the problem.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There's no line there.
You don't know where to stop.
Right.
And also maybe making it a three-way stop.
Hundred percent agree.
Mike, I mean, before you go tearing up the intersection, a stop line and.
Yeah.
Three stop signs, you know, instead of just two.
Right.
That forces everybody to stop.
Yeah.
And then at least, you know, you've got them stopped, so they're not gonna be speeding through the intersection because they're gonna be just starting up from.
Right. I, I agree. I don't think anyone would push back on that. Um, that's why I think Scott might have been out there earlier today to make sure that it looked good. But, uh, yes, I will follow. If we can, if we could put three and re-line it, um, that would be the goal. And if we could do it now. I know Mike's only concern was that because it, the stop sign's so far back, figuring out how we're gonna do that, because it widens out so much. It's just, just mechanics of it. But I agree, it, it has to be done. Has to be done. So, um, I want to do one other quick shout out, and this is related.
By the way, you're, you're, um, six minutes over.
Sorry, but this, this is.
And, 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 and by the way, you were talking at one and a half speed, so.
There you go. So equivalent to twenty-one minutes, right? Um, so with the accident that happened, uh, a week and a half ago, um, I, I had one of the residents from the nearby street. It was Overlook Road, or right there at the dead end, um, that, that told me, and I didn't realize this too. I know our first responders got there quick. But I want to give a shout out to them because the accident, we've had several accidents there, another fatality like a year ago. But with this accident in particular, uh, it was loud. People in that area, in that house next door, they were out of that house in seconds. And they were the first ones to get to both cars and they, uh, were the first ones to get to that mom and her son there, uh, before our responders got there. And I just want to give a shout out to them. I don't have all their names. Uh, I'm gonna reach out to them. I may invite them to one of our meetings coming up. But, um, you know, it's neighbors helping neighbors when things happen. Uh, you know, you go and you run to where something happens. And our first responders are great, but I want to give a shout out to them because they saw it. They were out there. They were first to the car. I believe they, they were talking to the mom and her son. Um, uh, the woman in the other car was already, uh, had already passed. Um, but, but they were there first and they, uh, were assistants and they backed away. So this people came. But, um, I think it was really helpful to those two, the mom and their son that were there. I'm sure they were happy to see someone come there right away.
We gave an award a year or two ago to somebody that, that aided in a drowning at, at Great Hill Lake.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it might be something we could consider.
It's a shout out. And I, and I, I have the names. I didn't want to bring up the names today, but I just, it was, it was something that it, it, it gave me faith and being kind again, a reminder that people will do the right thing, um, many, many times. Um, especially with something like that. So it makes a difference. So neighbors helping neighbor. I just love that. I just thought that was something that I, I need to get out there. So more details will come and, and I would like to invite those folks there. So, um, I have other things, but I'm gonna pass on it for another meeting. So what's the timing there? Is it time fifteen minutes?
Uh, you've got twenty minutes on that.
There you go.
Did you, did, did you want to talk about the, the other meeting we went to? Just a, a, a ten-second update?
Yes.
The, uh, we went out, we went out, meeting to a meeting down at, uh, DOT in Newington. And we met, and this had to do with the, uh, lighting up of the bridge. And it's not some.
Which bridge is that?
The, the bridge. There's only one that we're gonna talk about. Now, the, uh, and looking at the Aragonia and those different options. And, um, DOT, very receptive. Um, it's a good meeting. The mayor of, uh, Middletown was, right? He was, he was on Zoom. Uh, Mike and I were in the room. Uh, everyone else was on Zoom. We break, but. It wa, it was actually nice though to show up and, and have that conversation. But basically the, the bottom line is, um, they've got some projects that they're gonna be looking at and they're looking at incorporating that lighting as part of those projects. It's something that, you know, the issue is, so it won't be done for the two fifty. Um, but it is something three to five years is the window they gave us. And is, the, the idea would be is that they would look at, um, we gave them a rendering that, I think, Mike, you had pulled off the internet. There was a, there's sort of a sister bridge.
Yes.
And that was lit up that looked very nice. Um, and that, so that was provided to them. But they, their idea was they'd probably in collaboration come up with three or four different ideas. And then we would talk about kind of what, what our preferences would be. And then, but then it would get funded as part of their overall rehab project. So, so then what we want to have lighting for the two fifty. But three to five years is the window that we should expect to see some.
Probably even to light the arch.
They, they didn't get into that level of detail because interestingly enough, they've got to look at a lot of different factors. Um. They talked about, you gotta look at, you know, when you light what for the seizing, you know, which season, the downlighting, um, and how it impacts the water. And can it mess around with, you know, how things migrate or bright things like that? Or where they place the lighting for birds, where they place the lighting, how it impacts the superstructure, the superstructure when you're dealing with, um, snow being thrown, things like that, or future maintenance. So there's a whole lot of, that goes into it. Uh, a lot of things we would sort of expect, um, that you'd have to think about, but, um, they'll come with a proposal that basically we meet those.
They talk about minimizing light pollution as we continue to illuminate the night sky and.
Uh, they, they did not actually.
Yeah. But it's a, it's a big movement right now. People trying to minimize the light pollution into the sky.
I know a lot of places like Colchester made us do it in commercial areas.
Yeah, you gotta light down.
Made us cut the total wattage. Um, so it's just not as bright as it, you know, was it twenty years ago?
They did talk about that being able to use to pick different things where if they have more focus lights or.
Right.
It really depends on what effect you're trying to get. Uh, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out.
Like, like they're sent into that and they still have to get to the design phase.
Yeah.
Um, but I think they probably heard that before. That's a sense like that. And I know the last time we tried it, I think Wesley and sorry much against it because light pollution, impact on birds, et cetera. So there was, there was a pretty.
Yeah, they talked, they talked about, yeah, they had to be careful with what they do with birds to not mess around with.
It affects a lot of.
Yeah, so it's, there's a lot of things that go into it. So, but the, the, like I said, the short. But the the thing I said, the short version is, it looks like three to five years, we'll see some move.
And we get designs in a couple of years or whatever.
So the anniversary in twen- the anniversary of twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, we'll see.
Well, I think I bet, I think I bet DOT uh folks there had bucks to be the twenty by twenty twenty-nine.
Is that a town anniversary?
Three years after the big one.
Oh, okay.
I will say one thing that I was going to wait until next time, but this is worthwhile, the old asphalt plant down on. Um I had a discussion with the owners of the plant that bought that um in terms of whether they'd be interested in selling it um or doing so or allowing the town to buy it. Um so it's in play right now, uh and it's about five and a half acres.
Old Pilcon plant down there?
No, 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 this is right, 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 next to the five and a half acres that we have right now.
I thought you meant the asphalt producing facility.
Yeah, no, no, this this is so, and they have no intention of 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 starting it up again. Uh they put out a brave face, but they they really, I think, would like to find a way to offload that um and recover some of the funds they used to buy it, but um there's a lot of interest there. Um so that's good, uh it's in play, I was worried that they might want to try to start it up again, but if we could somehow secure that, and now we've got ten and a half, eleven acres along the river, that's going to be a focus, uh an area focus for our, you know, bar committee, you know, the uh the P O C D, uh all that, that area is going to be.
Being riverfront, aren't there grants and things that are available?
Well, that's last time we worked with D E C D on the Bowfield's grant.
Is that is that land um polluted?
So it is.
So I guess that was stupid question.
Yes, it's but this, they had a plan with the uh or uh um the state knows about it, DEEP knows about it. So they have some of the most contaminated soils in one of the buildings, uh so they've done some kind of mitigation. But it certainly isn't a clean, so there would have to be some things done, and but there's ways to do it with pass-through arrangements and all that sort of stuff.
Well, I mean, with the other land, we the land we bought five years ago.
Yes.
There's two and.
Right.
We're making headway on that.
And and there's still a half a million dollars floating out there, the deep set we may be able to use if a developer came in to that property, so that's still not take it completely off the table, that's a possibility, so.
But that was. I mean, let's face it, that's in our
that was in our last plan of conservation and development to re-gentify there the the riverfront. And it's gonna be a long process, but I think every time we have an opportunity to get rid of some of that old industrial base.
Well, and unlike unlike Cromwell's Park across the river, which sits on a sandy beach.
Right.
This whole stretch is is deep water mooring, like, I mean, it's, it has a lot of possibilities.
Sure.
Yeah.
We've got, yeah, we we've got, there's a lot of potential out there, a lot of potential, so, all right, we will move on to public comments, anyone online? No? Nice. All right, informal discussion.
I think we had it.
I think so too.
Okay.
Um I I know, Rick, I know there was, you wanted to talk about the the schools.
Um. Well. Yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
I kind of want to know, like, what are the next steps? Um. And I'm not going to be at the next meeting, so I might just throw my two cents out, like can't say I'm crazy about this plan. Um but where, what are the next steps for us as a board, the board is selecting? Do we have to make some sort of determination on this, or is it just prepare it now to go to a referendum?
Well, we'd have to decide to bring it, if we were to bring it to referendum in the form, it's been recommended.
Okay, that's hard to see. Yeah, so so it's now landed on our on our desks. So at this point, this is the way I see it rolling forward, and and if if someone um has a different idea, but I think it's a lot to digest, we've all been following the meeting, um it's going to be a big number. Um there's going to be a lot of passion. Um I want to say, I don't want to say on both sides right now, because I think people have been paying attention to this, but we have to individually come up with what we support, what we don't, if there's changes that we want to make to the recommendations. I know one of the concerns that not just you, but others have said is is, and I know Thomas talked about as well, is under this plan, the town, we now own that building.
Well, that's my main point, we we haven't given up any any real estate.
It kind of falls in.
We still have all these buildings we're we're maintaining.
Right, and and um what are the real costs to it, and what are the other upsides, can it be cost positive or negative, so? I don't know what that number is, and I think that has to be understood, because I think that would be us, that would be a no for a number of people that um don't want the town to absorb any more cost.
Right.
Whatever you want feedback from me, I'll give it to you, but everything you're talking about, I know you can't, you can't watch six months worth of meetings. But but, yeah, but all all of these issues, all of these issues were discussed.
Yeah, no, they were.
And and quite honestly, from speaking from my perspective, looking at which school to get rid of. You know, you could, it it, I think the group was pretty well, I'd say the vast majority of the group understood, after much discussion and looking at future needs and everything else. Valley View made sense to keep. Valley View is the one that has that huge parcel of land next to it, should we ever need to build again.
Right.
That made sense. And then when we looked at trying to leverage the grants to the greatest extent possible, that building was also the one that allowed us with the state money. When you do a a full gut and rebuild, the square footage per child, according to the state, is smaller than it used to be. So by doing a gut on that building.
Which building now?
Value you.
Okay.
You basically, you gut it out and you restructure classrooms within that, basically within that footprint. Based upon the new square footage per classroom, you actually gain, you you get the most reimbursement, it could be up to about fifty-five to sixty percent from the state, and you gain three classrooms in that rebuild. So you actually get, they're they are extending a little bit, I guess, to to add on to actually get a real honest to God gymnasium and a few other things in there. But you know, that one there looked like that made the most sense. The then the discussion came down to Gildersleeve or this. And quite honestly, I was thinking this as a rehab all along, until we did the walkthroughs. And you look at the structure, I mean, that building, the the front half of this was built as a high school. And the hallway width, the classroom size, all of that stuff. I, in fact, I think on the record, I said, you know, this is, this is a white elephant, you're you're trying to take a structure and fit third, fourth, and fifth grade into a structure that was, that front structure was designed for high school. And because it's built like a fortress, but you, you know, to take, to move doors, to to widen doors, to accommodate your your ADA compliance and all that other stuff. That was where, you know, the, in fact, I think I may have made the comment. When you're looking at Gildersleeve versus this, you, if you if you renovated this, it would be expensive, and you'd be trying to, in some respects, kind of take a sow's ear and make it into a purse. Because that building was always junior high and high school, it was sixth grade and up. The other thing with Gildersleeve was that if we took Gildersleeve and eliminated Gildersleeve, then the question becomes, what do you do with that building? What hazardous waste is in that building? What's it going to cost to demolish that building? What is going to be the feedback you're going to get from a budding neighbors with that parcel and what you do to that building, and that struck a nerve with me because I lived next to Central School for two decades and watched a thing fall apart. Then the conversation with this again came to, okay, well, we have solar on the roof, we're gaining revenue from solar. We currently lease two, I believe it's two classrooms to Oak Hill. And I think from you, Mike, the feedback was that Oak Hill is ready to lease as many classrooms as they possibly can. In a previous meeting we had here, we heard from Scott Cunningham that the state is really riding our police department because they're essentially too small, and they need more space. So there was a couple of weeks worth of conversations about what you could do with that building, and that building really could become some office space for the town, potentially in the front, the original high school. And then you could potentially take the L on the back, which is a first and second floor, and essentially shut that off from the rest of the building, using the back doors as an entrance, and you could lease that whole thing out. If you could make that building pretty much a a net zero cost, you would have, you would then be renovating two buildings for the town, which were built as elementary schools. That have the capacity to be renovated as elementary schools. But then when we walked through Gildersleeve, Carl Johnson and Bob Shea both said that there is a significant water problem drain-wise around that building to, because that's, it's a slab construction, to the point where moisture is infiltrating under that building. And tiles in classrooms are popping off the floor because of the moisture. So, you know, the, and stepping back, when we talked about, and we got into a detailed discussion about what you do with each building and how you go about leveraging state reimbursement, there's a, there's a fine line between wanting to do something, and and quite honestly, I give Ben Serp kudos, because Ben got on that committee wanting us to go through those green bar sheets, line by line by line by line. And I think when we did, we all found out that, first of all, this town does not put away dollars for a rainy day when it comes to capital improvements, so. They have a very poor track record in that regard. And then, as we looked at items, as you push uh a roof or windows or A C units or all these things, as you push them back year by year, the costs just continue
Right.
To snowball.
Yeah.
Um and that's when we got into discussion with Gildersleeve about again, this gets back to the value you, we benefited using a full state reimbursement and a gut and rebuild because we that was a smaller building, we gained three classrooms. With Gildersleeve, you would actually have to tear off about nine thousand square feet to accommodate the state requirement. And when you did that, we might save a little more money on the project itself. But if we do have any future growth with our kids, we have renovated two schools, we have no room to go, there's no extra space.
Well, okay.
So, I mean, I'm just giving you.
But you still have a high school, middle school that's oversized.
No, not, no, when you move the sixth grade up there.
Yeah.
When you move, when you move the sixth grade up there, we are now using the space.
Right.
That that was designed.
Even if you take back what what we're renting to Oak Hill? I mean, why can't the middle school be five, six, seven, and eight? Some towns do that.
There's not enough room for.
There's not.
Another full grade.
No, not not, there's not for four grades, and that's.
But for another full grade.
My point is, my my real on the big picture is we still have the old central school, that's the town hall, we're still going to have all these buildings, and we're going to have spent all this money. What have we really saved here?
Well, the.
You know, and I go back to the.
The report, the report says that in the short term, that, well, and the other thing I will say, and it these these pieces are just popping into my brain.
Yeah.
The one other piece, by closing this, that gives us the swing school. To 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 move, to move the kids to those schools. The, one of the guys on the committee made it, I mean, he made a very good point. The first committee called for closing Gildersleeve. Then we came out with the survey, which called for closing everything but one school. And that failed miserably.
Well, I think it failed miserably because it wasn't presented properly, frankly.
But I'll tell you, Rick.
Yeah.
If right now, you looked and went back to that same plan, we try to implement that plan now.
Okay.
We'd be only two million dollars different than we were there, because right now, the the cost increase in construction is conservatively six percent. If you take the cost of that building as they proposed it and add six percent, remember that one of the things I think a lot of people were pissed off about in the last vote, beyond one school, was that many people knew that there was significant multimillion dollar money that needed to also be allocated at a future date for the secondary school.
Right.
Which was not. This plan does that, and another concern that people had was you're closing buildings, but you're not doing anything with them. We also allocated two million dollars to this to make whatever enhancements need to be done, so that building would be usable. But when that the plan says, once the time is done and we use this as a swing school, that can become offices for the town, or that could be used for some other private purpose, but what people were concerned about, and another one of the things that I heard from many people was that this is a historic building, this is an architecturally significant building, and that we cannot have the building torn down.
Well, we don't want it torn down.
No, I don't. Well, what I said in that meeting was, I don't believe that the only way to save this is to keep it a school when you're trying to square.
Then this should maybe become the town, uh the town hall and the town offices.
And it.
And get rid of the.
It could, but then there's another cost. Way back in eighty-nine, when the town hall went into the central school.
Yeah.
I believe the highest cost then, and it'll be a lot more now, was the town clerk's office. That's why it's in the basement, it has to have a vault. And you have to, you have to think of this thing in stages. Because if you immediately said, okay, let's make this the town hall, let's unload this, you're talking about another multimillion dollars to add to this.
Unnecessarily.
Yeah. It's a, it, I think, I I I think the plan that that the committee came up with, it wasn't for lack of trying. I think we all went in there, I went in there, Ben served another one. Going through everything, we we put Bob Shea to the wringer. Can we get rid of this? Can we do this in other times? Will you get rid of this? All the things, especially with secondary school and all these other costs. And we realized when you start to remove these items, or you remove too many of them, it it's just, it's it's this never-ending story that continues as a problem. I don't know, I I'm of the opinion that I think we need to figure out, and I believe Mike's already started the ball rolling on that, is to figure out what Brainerd Place is how that's going to impact in a positive way our tax base. I hope in the discussion, and I think we need to present this, because people vote in oh for a lot of reasons. And and I I I agree with you, but I disagree with you, I do not think it was all for information. I I know people I talk with said they don't want all the children in one school that thought it was a safety issue. There are other people that said they don't, they never saw the results of a traffic study on High Street and how that would impact High Street.
I think it's safer on High Street than on Main Street.
Well, you're driving, but you're bringing all the other buses into that one property. There were, there were, and and the committee tried to go through that and address every issue, whether the, you know, whether the folks wanted or not, I think this plan goes through and and really addresses a lot of the issues that were brought up during the last campaign, and if you watch me at all those meetings from day one, I've been saying we need to get out, I'd said it again at the Board of Education last night. We now have to present this to the people. Let them understand our thought process, what we did, why we went through, why we chose what we chose, what it's going to cost, what the gross cost is, what the net cost is. If you chose to take Gildersleeve and rip off that nine thousand square feet and do both of those schools as guts and rebuilds, what is going to be the, what's what's the upside and the downside, what's going to be the savings? But will we have any extra space if we suddenly get an influx of kids?
But school enrollment has been dropping for like the last twenty-five years, ever since we built the high school has been dropping.
And I know they're planning on another projection, higher enrollment, yeah, that's part of the.
Yeah. I mean, I, maybe with the new apartments in town, we'll have some.
But see, I.
Portland's never going to be a big town.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think the apartments, and I, Jim and I have had this discussion before. I think the apartments, Brainerd Place, that was a red herring. Everybody was concerned about all those apartments bringing new families and new kids into town. My bigger fear are all the the wives or husbands or remaining couples like my mother who raise the families and the families that moved.
They're going to sell there.
The houses on Penfield Hill, Ames Hollow Road. The houses on Penfield Hill, Ames Hollow Road, all these houses where they may go down to the apartments, they may sell a four bedroom, two and a half bathroom house on Penfield Hill Road is not going to sell to a single person. It's going to be a family. So, you know, I.
With kids.
With kids, yeah. So I mean, that's, and that's why I think we were all, at least I was leaning towards Gildersleeve and leaning towards not doing the full gut to save that nine thousand square feet to give us some breathing room and some flexibility down the road.
Well, not to mention the problem with having third, fourth and fifth graders on Main Street important, what's going to be.
A lot of people had an issue with that.
Yeah, no, and it's a rightfully, it's a rightful, you know.
And, and.
It is.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's, that's like a no brainer. I mean, that should not be an elementary school.
Yeah, especially with the building that's going on down on the riverfront. That Middlesex Avenue is going to be.
Yeah.
You know, so.
But I still am a proponent of the one elementary school, I think Valley View is a perfect location for an elementary school, I will say.
I'm surprised at the comments that the, um, when we had the presentation where the guy came on, I, I forget. Oh, yeah. Like, whoa, gee, I don't understand why that failed.
But, but. Carl's look at us, but, and, and that's why this, we have to be cautious how we address this issue. Because the charge that this committee put forward was, was the, the voters have spoken and that this committee will look at the plans to eliminate one school. It's in the charge.
I, I will, I will.
It is in the charge.
So that's why I think we have to.
I think Ryan was wrong there.
We have to, we have to, oh, I think, I think.
Let's get Ryan on the horn right now.
Yeah, the survey, I think, muddied the waters, quite honestly. The survey made it worse.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
I, I will, I will say something, what Rick just said, because I know during that whole process, I was a huge advocate for getting good information out there. And there was just a bunch of no's and there was the signs everywhere, the fair and all that kind of stuff. Um, but when I sat and spoke to anyone for more than two, three minutes and said, here's the reason why. And I don't think I had one no when I explained, this is the idea of the school, this out works, it saves us money, we'll move on. So, yes.
Saw the sixty-eight million or whatever the number was. They didn't realize it was really only half of that.
So I guess my point is, I think had, and it's not just information, right? It has to make sense to you. You can't just say, once they get all the information, they're going to automatically say yes or no, but it was a huge difference. So the more education, the more people understood and they would ask questions about.
I remember the survey, one of the, and I said, I've said this a number of times. When the survey first came out, the first thing we all did was flip to the page with the bar chart to see what everybody voted for. But then I told Ryan that having worked with surveys in my former career all the time, they are loaded with data. And to just focus on one piece of data is wrong. That's where you look back and on a back page, eighty-three percent wanted to know what's going to happen with the closed buildings before they voted.
Right.
Now, and if, even if that plan went through at that price, we would still be coming back and hitting taxpayers with another eight or nine or ten million dollars from secondary schools. There was no money and no plan. So we would have had Gildersleeve and this that were both closing, you would have had the same dilemma. The only difference was you might've been able to bulldoze this, I mean, uh, Gildersleeve. But you still weren't going to tear this building down and a lot of people, for the historic reasons, want to know what's going to happen with this.
So I think, I think you're right in that, um, you know, we're educating. It wasn't a complete plan because of those questions about what do you do.
And those questions came up, those were driven by the survey.
Right. I, I agree. But I think the survey tech kind of muddied the water to some degree. Um, but I think the point was people wanted to know more about it and they wanted to get the real information and they wanted to have a source, which means our charge right now is to take the information that we have and make sure we communicate it properly and answer questions and get out there and make sure that we are.
We need to take a lesson from Ralph Sanpaner, and I've said this before, with the, the Route seventeen part.
Yep.
You can put, as meant, we, we've got twelve or fifteen different reports and data things. You put those on a website, people don't look at them. We need five or six or seven or eight more of those sessions like we had up there. And as the sessions go on, more people will show, more people will ask the questions and we will begin to get a feeling for what they want. But if you just tell them to log on and look at the, the data.
Well, maybe for instance, a lot of the town will be at the fair. Maybe there should be something about.
Well, yeah, and I've already talked to.
Okay.
Carl, just, because I think they need to consider getting.
And then like, uh.
Exactly.
Go to some of these.
Laurel was going to look into.
Portland Exchange Club, get on their agenda for a beat.
Oh, yeah. All of that, plus, plus a, plus a meeting, the auditorium meeting. You have to do it. This is.
Yeah, shit, that worked out, that worked out. I remember going to the ones in the, uh, way in the cafeteria and people would ask those questions and.
And honestly, that was another huge ball that was dropped. Rate Blue, the, the company that we hired to do the survey, included in their charge, including what they're, what we were paying them, they would facilitate one or more public discussions. It never happens.
But I know as a board of ed member at the time, we held a number of meetings and we invited people to come and usually two, three people would show up.
But once it, once the thing started spiraling online, I know, and, and that was the other thing is if you all recall, we were told by, by council that once the bonding question was written.
Right, you can't.
It's, you shut your mouth, no more talking about it. And I think some thought has to be given to that, Mike. I mean, as much, we have to.
Worded, right.
Well, we have to, I would say we've got to hold off for a while on that question to give ourselves enough time to do all this, this presentation to.
It's got to be part, absolutely.
Well, we have, we have the window of that, we need to have something approved via referendum before the application period at the end.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah. So we have, we have that window. But I also think it's important to make sure that people are educated about the moving parts. For example, if Oak Hill is willing to take on some additional classrooms, taking a look at like, you know, taking a look at five years worth of budgets, what are the carrying costs for this? Well, based on what they pay now for two classrooms, if they take on more classrooms, you probably can offset a lot of the costs to carry that building, right? Operationally. Um, knowing what is going to happen in terms of the police needing more room.
Right.
Right? And there's, there, there's some solutions.
I don't.
Police from Buck Foreman.
No, you.
No, they stay here.
Give them all of Buck.
For this space.
Oh, for example, yeah, take like youth services or something.
Youth service, yeah.
To give them more space for, to make them compliant with.
I mean, these are all ideas of things that, like, there's a lot of discussion that has to happen. But that's the stuff that's going to happen and then we need to be able to articulate it. So people know what's going to happen.
Right.
You know, with those buildings and how it's going to positively impact those things.
I mean, we need to know what's been done to that.
At the last, when we had the referendum, I mean, people I know were seeing that, whatever it was, sixty-eight million.
Very poorly worded.
It was, I mean, I tried to get some of my friends around and what do you mean sixty-eight million? Well, no, it's going to be half of that, but yeah, but.
It was especially, I, I agree with you, Rick, and especially, especially because we had at that point, uh, we had actually gotten a letter from the state saying that fifty-six percent, there was a fifty-six percent offset. That, that, that's, but you also don't know, I mean, just to say though, I can also say that, um, there's been other things that I've been involved in where you try to put some very common sense wording out there, what you think will help the public. And it doesn't, it doesn't clear bond counsel. We learned that even.
Yes.
Well, that's what I was wondering if it had to be worded that way.
Yes. We have to look at how we do that.
Yeah. And that's why, and that's why I, I said, I, if bond counsel is going to be a stickler and if ultimately the language could still be problematic, then we have to strategically figure out how far we can push out launching that bond question and still making it to allow us that window of time to explain the process. And hopefully in that window of time, get the data on potential tax revenue for Brainerd Place to find out what the rental, we could, how many classrooms Oak Hill we willing to take and what the rental would be, all that kinds.
We, we have most of this data available or we can get it pretty easily. I get Rich's work and I get the numbers. So we'll have projections on, because we're doing a reevaluation uh, coming up in the next month or two. Uh, Brainerd Place, we have pretty much outlined how it's rolling out so far. Uh, the spa, they're going to be open running probably by next November. Um, so we could kind of, kind of put that in and get an idea. Um, and that, that needs to be layered against what bond counsel says and what the numbers are going to be. But think about this, the school project right now, the bonding amount plus the, what, the total cost of the project was, was, was it ninety million? Like, all of it, just the total.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four million dollars.
That's the gross cost.
Gross. I had fifty-eight or fifty net, fifty-eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand net. I don't know. I took that note from the.
My, my, my back of the napkin, looking at all the numbers was what, like eighty-seven million total cost. Uh, state absorbs a lot of it, but I think the total bond that the town will have to do is close to fifty, forty-nine. I think that was the number. Just let's assume it's close, whatever the number is, you know, don't quote me out there on that. But, um, but that number, uh, that bond cost, we now have to figure out, calculate what we do twenty, thirty, what the cost is going to be. And, uh, that number sounds big, but we've got almost a hundred million dollars of projects going on in town. So on the business side, we've got.
And that's the big thing. We need to know.
Wild card, but.
Right.
But when does Brainerd Place really kick in because of the tax abatement? So we gotta.
Well, and we're going to know that for the next couple of years.
That's why we need to.
Right. So, and that's got to fit, and then the savings that we do too, because the savings kick in as the plan goes forward. I'm not sure what the total savings was. You guys may know better. Was it, uh, six hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand a year?
Oh, with the overhead for the school, I think it sounded like six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
It's not as much because we, you know, we still have two schools.
And whether that goes.
Still have the building.
So there was, so there's still, but they're big numbers. So we have to be able to explain it and balance out and do a clear, we have to have a two minute.
Agreed. Well, we can't do what we did before, which was just continue to let the clock tick away.
We gotta do, that's why I kind of wanted to just start to discuss it because you guys are going to be out campaigning too. And I mean, this is something maybe be talking about when you, if you're going door to door or.
Well, and honestly, not that, not that it becomes a campaign issue, but I think campaign or not, we still all need to be talking.
I will, I will.
It's a good opportunity to talk about with the campaign and the fair coming up.
One of the questions that they're going to ask you and you and you and me and you is what's your position at the schools?
I was on the committee and I, and I said this, and I, the guys aren't here tonight and I'm not disparaging them, but I, I told everybody from the beginning, I voted in favor of the plan and I will support the plan now. And I, and I, I found that a little disconcerting that the two members of the, of the board of selectmen that were on the previous committee voted in favor of the plan, but then voted against it when they sat here. And I won't do that. Now, I'm gonna, I, I, I asked all the right questions. And I, like everybody said, there is no right answer to this thing. The, no matter, we have to do something. The longer we wait, the more it costs you. You pay them, you pay them now or you pay them more later.
No one knows better than Bob Shea trying to fix.
Oh, my God.
He has, the whole bit. So, uh, I think this could, we need this kind of discussion. This is probably the most important part of our meeting tonight that people will pay attention to.
Yeah.
Because they're listening, they're listening for numbers and the whole bit. And we will endeavor as a board to go forward and get accurate numbers, best estimates that we can, provide good information and we're aware, I think, of all the potential pitfalls. Making sure we do something with the school, making sure that it's, it's, it's not a cost to the town.
And, and I, and I'll say this too, we, I mean, growing up in town, I've seen it. There were the families when I was in junior high and high school, the families that were always band boosters and sports boosters and all these other boosters and we're asking for all the expenditures. Life changes. Your kids graduate school and suddenly they're not about spending money in the schools anymore. They're about cutting funding on the streets. So there, and I say that with all due respect, I know there are people in this town whose children in that school system and they want the best that we can provide their children, the best learning environment and the safest place where they, they can feel comfortable with their kids. Especially after seeing what happened in Minnesota, we could.
I know.
So, and that was one of the things with Gildersleeve. That one school does not have a mantra. The, the high school, when you go to the front door, you got to, you get buzzed in and you talk to somebody. Valley View, I believe you have that. Gildersleeve, you walk through those doors into the open space. There is, there's no security there. So that would be one of the, the things that has to be done there is add security to the front.
But, oh, yeah.
So, and so you, there's going to be a lot, but I think people, I'm of the opinion at this point that we have to give people all the information, the logic that went into the discussions and decision-making and let them make an honest decision based upon what we tell them. Yes or no? Now, I, I don't know.
But my last thought on this is that we're in a unique and good time to be able to talk about this because of the growth going on in town.
Yeah.
Had we not had these projects going on in town, this would be a much different discussion.
Oh, great.
Uh, we wouldn't have, I think, to wear with all, but I think we have an opportunity to, I think everything's a place to be able to make this happen, whatever that is.
Or some variation of.
Some variation, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, and, and pull enough people together in a plan that makes sense for the kids.
I am not, I, I'll say this to end my last statement, I promise. I am not wedded to this plan completely. And what I said with Lou Pairs' plan before this, and I was the only guy on this board that, that agreed to approve it because I said that plan needs to be a starting point for discussion. And with, and we have to make a decision based on public comment. That's why it's important to wait to come up with your bonding question until you get your feedback from the public. You know, but I, I, I think we just need to get, let people know what's going on, what went into this and, and hear their comments.
Rick, thanks for picking this up.
Okay, I appreciate it. I wanted to start some lively discussion and, you know.
We got it, but this is good.
Make sure we have enough in the tank for the, the project after this, which hopefully maybe is, uh, more sewer and water. So we can continue to increase our ramblings.
That's another discussion. That's a whole other one.
Okay.
Shout, shout out to the school system too, as more of.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I just think we need to, yeah, and we need to.
I think we have a high bar.
Yeah.
Explain to voters.
Yeah, exactly.
Why we think this might or might not be.
Or, or what, what they feel is a reasonable alternative to them.
And that's what we need to be asking.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, beautiful.
Okay.
This is, this has been a great conversation. Much better than me just monologuing.
Yeah.
All right. Um, follow up, I have nothing on ethics tonight to discuss. Um, we have a executive session that I think will be very quick.
You want me to make a motion? I'll make a motion, go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a contract renewal slash lease of town only.
No sex, that, Jimmy, who wants it?
Whoever, whoever did it.
Sir Tim.
Sir Tim.
Successful.
Sir Tim, yes.
Can I take a potty break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Teacher man.